All right, the quiet. Quiet, ladies and gentlemen.
One nation under God, in thy name we pray.
Roll call.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Karen?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mrs. Whitmer?
Here.
Mr. Ronco?
Here.
Can I make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call?
Karen?
Yes.
Or I'm sorry, Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Ronco?
Yes. Motion passes. Item number four, supervisor's report.
Okay. Let me get this light up real quick. Just a couple of pictures that I can see. I guess we almost don't need the lights on, do we? A little bit about the Ward Athletic Complex. I talked to you a little bit last meeting. And we made some progress. After speaking with Terry McCoy, who retired from Strollo, we were in search of the prints that were already completed from the design that happened when they did the high school here. So there were already drawings done and paid for and ready to go back in 2002, when they did some work on this. But they, at that point in time, obviously, the funding wasn't there to do some things that they were trying to accomplish. So at the end of the day, we're lucky with what we have currently out there. But we did scour and locate some of the documents. And Terry went down to Strollo and was able to acquire a few prints that were duplicates of the originals. And so we have some documents that demonstrate what drawings they had. So this is, when I was looking at the prefab buildings, is probably, I shouldn't say probably, is much nicer than the prefab buildings that I was looking at. And talking to Greg Strollo, Greg indicated that he thinks that the drawings that are already completed, ready to go, taking them out to bid, we can come way under the cost for those prefab buildings. And the prefab buildings aren't quite as nice as what was set up for the restrooms and concession that were in the existing Ward Athletic Complex documents. So kind of a nice layout. And if you look at the mouse, here's the concession area, this whole area with the opening here, man door. You're looking at men's room on this side, women's room on this side. And here's the mechanical room. The mechanical room already exists. That is that brick block building out at the Ward Athletic Complex. That was completed in preparation for new phases of building work that could go out at that complex, okay? It also has this whole area here, which is some storage, which is much needed. Here's a garage door, man door, et cetera. So if you look at this drawing, you can see from the front, here's the concession stand, here's the man door and concession stand, and there's the way it looks with block in the front. Sides, kind of get an idea. Behind this, behind this wall would be an entrance way like this. This shows the door in that block wall. Kind of blocks that access of vision and whatnot from one. So that would be on the sides of this building. And on the back of the building, there's a garage, garage-style door and man door. Made of the material that you already see. So here's the site. And this building right here is that existing mechanical room. And this is the shed that they use to sell concessions out of currently. Okay? So what I did was I took the, that drawing that you saw previous and added it to this to kind of give you an idea where that, that building would be laid out in retrospect to the rest of the facility. That's where it was originally intended to go with the mechanical already there. That's a cost that will be likely, will have to be updated to code, but likely not be something that we'll have to spend money on if the utilities are already brought into that facility right there. So that's a big, big plus in the whole direction in terms of not going with the prefab and going with the drawings that were already existing. So giant, giant advantage for us. But this kind of gives you an idea of where will that building and approximately how large will it be? It might be a little bit smaller. That's just kind of me laying it in there based on the drawing, based on the existing mechanical room, kind of laying it over that just to give you an idea.
So we just have to run sewage that out to the system.
So that's a great question. So now the bus garage is right here, okay? And we have a line, here's the, here's South Side. So we have a line that goes straight across here into the bus garage. So it already exists right there. Very easy to get the plumbing piece to that, the water, which, which would have been a major cost for us had we not done the bus garage and put it in that location. There's still going to be some tie-ins and fees and whatnot to get, to get water and sewage to it. But they're right, already right on the property. Think that's going to be a big, big advantage for us. One of the things, I'm going to go to the previous screen here. So one of the advantages, I think, of utilizing this spot, we take this existing concession building that we've been using, and we move it and move it in place of the storage building. And then it has the ability to cover up whoever's up, take tickets and whatnot, they're undercover. It has sort of like a porch-type area that they can take tickets from. So we almost have a ticket booth just by replacing this existing. Kind of a nice, nice package. We have some cement work being bid out currently to get a sidewalk from this piece right here and fill in, well, this is all ground right here currently. And what we're going to do is we're going to fill this in with cement and put sidewalk to the existing stands that are there right now. Kind of give you an idea. Also, as we spoke about removal of the tractor trailer for storage, we're going to get rid of that, put in that place, the storage container there and a pad there. Okay? Okay. So obviously, this is not easy to read from way back here. So Lance and I met, and Lance and I are going to tag team a little bit on this. But overall, prepared for success, there's a measure from ODE that we're going to be beginning getting graded on. And it is a factor of a number of indicators. And right here, if you look where it says what is being reported, the measures are, so college admission test. Participation. Yeah, it's hard for me to read it from here. College credit, plus credits, industry cred, credentials. So that's really what we're going to talk about. This is what this is about today, is building industry credentials. Honor's diploma, advanced placement, and international baccalaureate are all different options which will be measured on. So where we see kind of a gap right now for us is industry credentials. Now, some of our students do go down to the Career Center. They pick up industry credentials. But what we want to try to do is beef up what we currently offer in electives to also increase industry standard credentials. So one of these options are this Microsoft Office licensure. So I'm going to let Lance talk to you a little bit about the licensure that we're looking to move to.
Yes, Mr. McCoy pointed out, one of the things that we looked at in terms of looking at industry credentialing, most of the things we teach at Columbia High School, there are currently 13 different areas where a kid can get industry credential. We really don't offer them. But if we look at information technology and business, there are quite a few, and Microsoft would be one of those. We also looked at, well, what would be the cost? Because we're already teaching the content. What would be the cost of sending a kid out for testing? We start researching, the nearest test center is near Kent. So we're talking about busing kids to Kent to be tested. And the cost of the, each individual test is around, I forget what I put, I think it was around $86.
Yeah, this says 75, but that's based on our license.
Right. So we actually got, and Patricia Misos did a nice job. She got in touch with Microsoft and found out, how do you, how do you become a test center since there's none around us? And she found out that we could, we bought the license. It's, I forget the numbers here. Do you have the numbers, Mr.?
Yeah. So an individual seat's 75, one seat's 195, five, 495, 10, 695, 25, 1295, and 30, 1495. And then an unlimited seat package is 2150.
So I went and talked to Mr. Monk about it. Obviously, with, when you're talking about transportation and whether, whether the students paying or the districts paying, I think it might be a lot more cost-effective if we started offering that. And again, I think the main benefit, though, is a student graduates with the opportunity to be credentialed in some very valuable information. Whether they choose to go to college or not choose to go to college, maybe they work in an IT-related field during college and have the chance to pick up some extra money while they're going, while they're attending classes, so.
And I think, you know, when we start talking about technology, there's, there's lots and lots of different credentialing that we can look at. What we have to do is try and meet some of the state credentials that will be acceptable by the state and then provide opportunities. So we think this is sort of our entrance into, well, and I can kind of get excited about the technology and when we start thinking about we can get some credentials in terms of technology and get kids something that immediately they can come out of school and start working and maybe work while they're going to school in an area or field that they're interested in. This was all part of some of the entrepreneurial stuff that we've been talking about for the last, I don't know, maybe year and a half now.
Right.
Well, we've, we've entered into some coursework. And it's, I would love to just, you know, you may wave that magic wand and wham, you got it, go. But it just, there's, there's, there's a lot of detail in what needs to happen in order to get your staff in place to be able to teach the coursework, get them professionally developed. Because really, we're not looking, we've hired, we're hiring tonight, you have an engineer on your, on your list that's going to be part of this program that we're developing. But some of our existing staff that can teach the content that we can use to get some of this credentialing. Trish Misos is certainly very, very valuable. She's been tremendous asset for us moving forward and really has helped Mr. Hostetler, I think, open this vision up a little bit more and more each semester or each dime weeks even. So we're getting to the point now where now we'll get some other, some other meat to the, to the meal.
Yeah, and it gives us just, it gives us another opportunity. We already have AP courses. We already have college courses. This gets, gives us the ability at a small high school to actually offer industry credentialing as well. So I think it's a great opportunity for our kids and to hopefully boost our state scores as well.
Does anybody have any class or anything prepared for successes on the state website? You're going to see, you know, those bullet points listed there and what it's all about. You know, it seems sometimes that the state's building the plain white closet sometimes, and that's just a change in education. And many of you that have been on the board for a while have seen lots and lots of changes over just a short period of time. We see it in the testing, where they move from, from the OAAs to PARC to some of the online stuff that we're doing currently. And some of these requirements, essentially, they're going to be requirements. They're, again, they're our incentive mandates. They're asking us to do things. They're, they're setting us up to, to provide more and more, less and less. We're going to keep doing that. We're going to keep doing it to the best of our ability. And I think this is one that's within our means that the cost is not terribly prohibitive. And we think that we can gain a lot more out of this and provide a great service to students who are interested in this tech area. So what's the recommendation of all three, of all the six costs? We're not, I don't think we're going to jump into a cost till we get an idea of what students are going to be aware with this. When I get a number of students, and it depends because some of the conversation, and we're going to find out about this, can we charge a cost as a, as a site to be able to outsource that to any neighboring, you know, within a 50-mile radius who want to come and take this credentialing? If we can charge a cost for those seats, we may, we may want to go with the unlimited to offset our, our cost or investment in the whole process. But we're working to be, we'll want to be a test site. If we want to be a test site, then we're probably going to need to go unlimited. I, I think the cost regardless with the unlimited is minimal. It's really not a tremendous cost, to be honest with you. And to be able to say, I'm not going to worry about cutting off kids to get into a program, or if we can provide that as a service to districts outside of ours, so be it.
And I'm not really sure, we're going to try to get kids really excited about this, but this is kind of uncharted territory. You know, we just, as, as administrators, just started hearing about industry credentialing at our level at, you know, I want to say September, October of last year. The students haven't heard of this. They, it's going to take a little education from our part to let them see the benefit of being credentialed as they graduate. So we're going to be, hopefully, seeing more and more kids drawn to be, to these types.
And we started down that path with the AP class, with some of the other stuff. And I think that we're just going to continue to expand. And hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to provide the appropriate curriculum for them to be successful to get that credentialing, so. Any other questions? We'll keep you in the loop as to where we're headed and what we're doing. I just wanted, we wanted to mention what's happening. We think it's important that you, you get an idea of what's, what's going on from some of those preparations that kids are going to be leaving us with. And we're just trying to keep you in the loop and the information. So that's all for mine.
Thank you. Item number five, principal's reports.
Yeah, we're going to kind of go out of order here. Kim just gave me the go-ahead to just continue. This will be real quick, under academics, curriculum, staff development. We had a successful student finish the school year. I wanted to say a special thank you to Mrs. Misos, Mr. Wolf. They put together a nice highlight film this year. Unfortunately, we can't upload it to YouTube because it does have music, have rights to the music. We also visited three engineering firms during the last week of school just to feel out if there were some businesses in the area that might be open to some establishing a partnership with us and getting in there. So we had really good meetings with them, and they're really interested in helping the next generation. And their, their benefit to this is that every, each of the three firms told me they cannot get enough workers, trained workers, I should say. Trained workers, so it sounds like an exciting opportunities. AP teacher training. Miss Jennifer Sam was invited this summer to actually be a grader for the AP Calculus. And she got to go and I, I, this wouldn't be my idea of vacation, but she spent five days grading AP Calculus tests. And she was very excited about that. And we're honored to have her, and she's done such a good job with the AP scores. Wade Bowley and I, we're going to be attending a safety meeting on the 30th of this month. It's called Working With the Media During Crisis. So we're going to be going up together and going through that safety plan. Good luck to speech. And Trish Nord, as they venture off to Salt Lake City for Nationals, we wish them good luck. And a spring athletic recap. ITCL White Division Champions in three out of the four, baseball, softball, and girls' track. So we want to say congratulations to them.
South Side Middle School, good news report. First of all, grades on a roll. The South Side Middle School students continue to do their outstanding work in the classroom, which was reflected again by grade numbers on our honor roll and our honor roll with distinction awards. The totals were in the fifth grade, honor roll 24, sixth grade 29, seventh grade 21, and eighth grade 24. And honors with distinction, 34 in the fifth grade, 28 in the sixth, 17 in the seventh, and 15 in the eighth. So congratulations to all the students who continue to do their fine academic work. Our Clipper Athletics, our track teams finished their seasons on a successful note with strong showings in the ITCL championship meets. Both teams came up just slightly short of White Division Champions. We had our sign-up for fall sports prior to the end of the school year and with coaches preparing for the official start of practices in August. DI traveled to Knoxville. They were in Tennessee to compete in the DI Global Competition the last week of May, with our team finishing in the top 30 in the world and represented the Columbia and Columbia County very well. We finished up the school year with some end-of-year trips and activities to celebrate our year of hard work. Fifth grade spent the afternoon at the Skate Zone. Sixth grade enjoyed outdoor education experience at Camp Fitch. The seventh grade traveled to Cedar Point for a day of math and science study in addition to all the roller coasters. And eighth graders traveled to New York City for two days of New York history sightseeing. And we're entertained by attending a play on Broadway. Arts, year-end, excuse me, year-end activities were held by the music department, and artwork was displayed to allow parents and public to appreciate the work done by South School Middle School students during the year in the area of fine arts. South Side Middle School counselor Kathy Robcarney organized a career day on May 20th to allow seventh and eighth grade students to visit with speakers from many different career areas. We ended the year with several different end-of-year activities. NJHS sponsored a formal dance for the seventh and eighth grade. It was a very well-attended, the kids had a blast. School was entertained by multiple acts at a talent show, which included singing, dancing, a ventriloquist, and a magic act. And then the final day of school was highlighted by the presentation of our sixth grade of a museum project that pointed out changes in our society in five-year periods. And part of that was including the popular dances of that specific time. State testing, the results of the spring air tests are scheduled to be released in about two weeks. We'll be looking at the data to assess our strengths and weaknesses and begin planning and preparing for next spring's test, which will be the first time in the last few years that we don't have any changes. We will have the same tests next year that we had this year. So that will help us in preparing for the test. Hopefully, the, every year, the decision is made that we're going to give a different test, and we're going to change this and change that, which has the entire system in flux. And the South Side Middle School office will be completely open on August 1st to begin the 2016-17 school year.
Thank you.
For Joshua Dixon, my leadership team took a survey to their grade levels and some of the professional development activities that were requested for next school year. We're going to look at our curriculum maps and look at some revisions, especially where assessments are concerned, to make sure our assessments are aligned, and to bring in maybe some county support for helping us assess the assessments to make sure that they're valid and reliable in what we're doing. And we did get to look at illuminate program this week, the admin team did. And I'm hopeful that some of the teachers will take on that to develop some grade level benchmarking so that everything is comparable across the board in a grade level. So we're going to be doing that, looking at some different resource allocations where there are gaps in the Common Core standards in relation to the resources that we currently have. The student learning objectives will need revised, especially the demographics and growth targets for the kids. And written expression and writing will still continue to be a goal for us. I did include in Boor Share some data that supports that and why we've been focusing on writing for the past two years and what has happened during that time. Third grade reading guarantee, all third graders on a RIM, which is a reading improvement and monitoring plan, were promoted to fourth grade. 15 of those students who did not receive a 42, which is a promotion score in the fall, were able to take the Terranova, and they all did pass the Terranova. So they'll move on. And I'm confident they passed the spring test. But as Dave said, those scores don't come out until later in the month. So we didn't want to take the chance and have to do summer school and summer testing. So we gave them the Terranova. Tomorrow, the third grade ELA do come out because they're sending those out early enough to give districts the option of doing some summer testing in July. So I'll get those to you once those come out. In the diagnostics that I went over, reading, kids that were clearly on track or needed further assessment, I went back and looked at 13, 14, 14, 15, and then this year to see the improvement with our focus on literacy collaborative. And kindergarten were about the same across the board. So was first grade. Second grade in 13, 14 was 74%, 80%, and 100% this year. And third grade was 86%, 95%, and 100% this year. But writing's humongous. I mean, I, you could just tell it was our focus the past two years. First grade was 63% to 75% to 96%. All kids clearly on track this year at the end of the year. Second grade was 70% to 73% to 100. And third grade was 45% to 90% to 98%. So I'm, you know, really happy with that goal and the fact that we had it, and everybody worked toward it and knew it. And there's some math scores there for you, too, that are impressive. Thank you. So I'd like to thank my staff. I'd like to thank Mrs. Miller, my secretary, for a wonderful, successful school year. Everything went smooth all the way to the end of the year. I'd like to thank PTO for Teacher Appreciation Luncheon and for paying for our, our school field trips. Also, the Columbia Police Department for assistance with our spring safety drills, which included a lockdown as well as an evacuation to the First Christian Church. I'd like to also thank all of my families and the businesses in the area that continue to support the Spring Fling. This was our 18th annual Spring Fling, and we made over $4,000. That's after paying everything ahead of pay. So I'm looking forward to using some of that money for our retention pond. I did talk to the city, and Lance Willard, the city manager, is coming over next week with me. And we're going to look at the retention pond. And I, just as a reminder, also, the class of 1973, during the street fair, have their reunion every year and asked if they could have a building tour. So I went over on a Saturday morning, gave them a building tour, and they gave me $450 for the retention pond. So I'm going to be putting that to good use. And also, my custodial staff, so far this summer, just outstanding. They're organized, they're working along, chugging along, and things are getting done, and several rooms are completed already. So thank you to them. And that is my report. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
One thing, the drawings shows locker rooms, right?
No, that's a different one.
So that was just restrooms, right? That's what's in those drawings, right?
Thanks for coming, Terry. What's our plan, just to have restrooms in there? We used to start meetings at 6:30, now it's at 6:00.
Nobody gave him the...
How did he give you the memo?
The memo, you didn't get it.
There's a separate building for the locker rooms for both boys and girls. That's another drawing that was part of that original set of drawings.
A separate building.
Separate building, right. It's larger than this, obviously. It's like twice or three times the size of this one. This is just public restroom facilities, concession area, and also storage of some maintenance-type vehicles and, you know, other things associated with the track.
Scott, that other drawing, locker rooms, would be on this side of that walkway.
Yeah.
Not on the other side. Yeah. Well, you know, to be honest with you, when we did Dixon, Dixon was our primary focus because of the needs that Dixon had at that point in time. And to be honest with you, for us to be getting to this and having some money from that project to put towards this is pretty, pretty nice. You know, I would love, I think, to put something over here, but I think at the end of the day we're going to have, you know, do some kind of fundraising to get that kind of opportunity, some kind of fundraising. Well, Terry.
It's Ron. Can you load that up for a second? I just wanted to make sure everyone understood. There's, the one piece of the building that we did build initially was the mechanical room. And that's where the power comes in. That's where we also have our water lines coming in for the irrigation system for the field. So that building, that little corner over there, which is about four by eight or four by 10 space, was originally built and it was due for the utilities of the field that we needed to do. So that is a key piece. So we just expand and connect to that building and build all, you know, around it on two different sides.
Talk to, kind of a little bit about the water and the fields that was put in there.
Right. We actually drilled a well out there. Tom Bell did a well for us and that well was, it's, as I go into the field, as you walk into the field, it's to your right and it's probably 75 or 100 feet to the south. That's the well location. The well, the water line comes into that building that I'm speaking of right now that's out there. And that is for the field irrigation system. And that irrigation system is still functioning as far as I know. It does need to be drained down annually. Each year you drain it in the, in the fall and take care of those things.
Still have time. There's still...
I believe there was, but I can't, I have to go check it again. I just don't remember the detail.
Maybe the downside of that is that when I came here, I had no idea of what that mechanical room did. And I relied a lot on Jimmy Marino. And whether or not we drained that properly or not, I don't know.
Yeah. That is something to look into.
You don't know.
That's what makes it confusing.
Yeah.
Well, we have, we have the ability to do...
What do you know what we do? We just turn that damn thing on and see what happens, right? What's going to happen, right? We're either going to blow or go. I think you're going to have to maintenance it properly because the last thing you want to do is wreck equipment because we didn't service it. So what, I think that when we get to that point of where we're ready to do the building, we'll service the lines and make sure everything's done the right way.
I'm sure that there's a book, a binding book here, who said with the name of the company that installed the irrigation system, you know, the contact information, so you could probably research it a little bit and find that book.
Yeah.
I know that Laurie Posey had it at one time and so...
So the sewer line is really the big line that we'll have to go in. We built that line to the bus garage.
Right. And that sewer line is there. All we have to do is connect to the manhole, which is close to this location of this building. Utilities are conveniently located close to what we have to do. So it's great. You have the water, the sewer, the storm sewer, drainage, for the track and everything else obviously goes all the way down to the retention pond we had built back then. So there's a lot of things that were put into place and they're sitting there waiting for you to just plug in and connect to. So it's an ideal situation, I think. And I think that will keep your costs in line because you don't have to go off and run a half a mile of line or something. It's all close by.
Terry, just, you're, you're kind of hitting my memory now. When we, because I now remember that there were plans, I didn't remember how far they got, and I remember Andrew, I can remember Andrew's last name, had set all these plans up when you came into a football game trying to do fundraising, there were other efforts that were going to be done. But once the track, when the track was being designed, didn't we even have a Columbia alumnus that...
Yes.
Had some ideas?
Yes, she did. I don't know that it was ever followed up on and any solicitation of funds was...
No, it was all done...
Yeah. So I mean, and he's still there.
But this was done, this was all done about the same time.
2002.
Yeah. Just after this building was finished, following that. I think Joe Roden, did he get some money from a beverage company that was attached to the school? Somehow they brought in some money for that.
Yeah. Well, Joe had, Joe's family would be, I don't know if you remember, you and I attended. Joe had to leave and I think you had to leave and you left me with our alumnus to explain how we were going to do the track. I now do remember fondly, yes.
He walked it from his memory.
Well, yeah. Because he designed tracks and he was also a college, a college track coach. He'd been an Olympic track coach. And he now was designing and was showing us where everything should be for the track. But I believe Joe had something else to do that day.
After he scheduled the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm now remembering a lot of things.
Little flashbacks, little tragic moments.
That's it?
Little tragic moments.
I mean, Kelly was 14 then.
That's right.
No, she wasn't.
Maybe six.
So everything is really set in place and just on time and you can do the funding now to implement it, you know, let's put it out for bids and see what happens with the numbers and get them moving. But I think you have a great opportunity here. As I said, at the time, we submitted all the documents for a building permit from the state. That permit is no longer active, let's put it that way. After two years or so in 2004 or '05, it was ended. But it wouldn't take much to resubmit these drawings for the concession stand and restrooms, submit it to the state and get them back and so forth and get that moving. So it should, should go through. It complied then. Yeah. So that's just a process you have to do is resubmit them to the state and obviously advertising and bidding the project and then getting the construction started.
The critical part for us was this restroom piece. The storage and the concession are bonus, in my opinion. And I really think all that's going to be well under what we were projecting with a prefab building and trying to modify it and bring utilities to it with everything kind of custom set for us to do what we're doing right now.
The building will look just like the little piece that's out there, that is brick on it and then it has split face block. And we put wood trusses on the roof and then we shingled it, you know, with a green shingled roof to match the green on this building. So that's, should be pretty simple. The little piece that's there now, that roof may have to be removed or completely built over top of it, but that's a detail that has to be worked out. But drawings are there, you're ready to go, I'd say do it.
All right, let's do it.
If I can be of any service, just give me a phone call. I'll be happy to help you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Item number six, public input.
We need to read the whole.
Yeah. We need to read that. Open forum will be held to discuss the use of IDA, Individuals with Disability Education Act funds. These funds are provided for the use and education of students with disabilities in our school district. Public input as to how these funds are to be allocated may be shared, consideration at this meeting. So no one here, so... All right, item number seven, no need for an executive session at this time. Do believe. Item number eight.
Make a motion to consider approving the May 2016 financial reports.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Kathy, a couple of quick questions. The entries that are visas?
Yes.
What were those?
You know, we've always paid them on a check before. You've seen over the years. Well, they were using it so fast and furiously, I was paying them online. Christie didn't really know how to charge those off, so I kept sort of talking, talking with them and talking about that project this month to charge them all off. We've been paying them online, but not charging them to the right accounts and that kind of thing. And it was a little bit of a struggle to get some of the receipts and so we'll get it better. I had it going wrong. People just need to get used to the procedure. They sign out their credit card, they come back with the receipt in hand and we match it to the BO. That part was missing. So I sat down and that's from November to May.
Okay. Other question, at the, towards the end of the check register, there's a lot of really small, like 35, 25, with a lot of different names. Just curious, were those like...
Those are reference officials for games, yeah, of track and basketball and that kind of thing.
I kind of thought so, but I just, I was curious.
Good segue into that. We're hoping to do something called Arbiter Pay next year. OHSSA has, they're actually using a college company to do it because of the problem with IRS 1099s or W2s and all that kind of thing and getting social security numbers from these folks. So what we hope to do is contract with them, actually the whole county is probably going to do that, and then they'll be paying those folks. So you won't sing, you won't be seeing them.
So we won't have to worry about F99s, W2s.
You won't have to worry about 1099s, W2s because what was happening, of course, and IRS knew it, they'd work $500 here and $500 here, never getting a 1099 because nobody was putting it together. And they will be now. So they'll be getting one from Arbiter Pay, which is going to be through OHSSA.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number nine.
Like, consider a motion to approve the amendment made at the 2016 meeting of the Board of Education.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number 10.
I may have to consider temporary appropriation resolution for fiscal year 2017 to cover the period of July 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2016, as follows, as listed below.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Item number 11.
I can make a motion to approve the final appropriation resolution for fiscal year 16 as submitted by the Treasurer to appropriations. All fund types includes prior year carryover, $12,529.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Roncone?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number 12.
Make a motion to approve the final amended certificate of estimated resources for the FY16 as submitted by the Treasurer. The total resources of all fund types would be $16,678,956.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number 13.
Like, consider a motion authorizing districts' participation in inter-agency government agreement with the Ohio Department of Education related direct certification of eligibility for the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program for the year 2016-17.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number 14.
I may have to consider approving compensation rates for substitute employees for the 16-17 school year as follows. Eighteen per day substitute certified teachers, $11 per hour substitute bus drivers and medical professionals, 810 per hour for classified support staff substitutes other than bus drivers and medical professionals.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number 16.
Make a motion to consider approving the drug testing program for the 2016-17 school year.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number 17.
Like, consider a motion to approve employment of Ryan Holmes as OGT tutor for the summer 2016 as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board approved schedules pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number 18.
I may have to consider approving employment of the following personnel on a supplemental contract for the 16-17 school year as recommended by the superintendent, compensation in accordance with board approved schedules, as listed below.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Discussion. Roll call.
Roncone?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number twenty.
Make a motion to consider approving the contract for summer two thousand sixteen extended duty of Amber Waller, high school guidance counselor, up to fifteen days as her per deal rate, with approved fit of documentation as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion. Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number twenty-one.
Like to consider motion approving contract for summer two thousand sixteen extended duty for Kathy Rockarney, middle school elementary guidance counselor, up to five days at her, her, uh, per deal rate with approved documentation as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number twenty-two.
I may have to consider approving employment of the following personnel as director, supervisor, or coach of a pupil activity program for the sixteen, seventeen school year, as recommended by the superintendent, compensation in accordance with board approved schedules pending verification of all credentials. OSHA safety position, Daniel Becker.
Discussion.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, discussion. Roll call.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number twenty-three.
Like to ma, make a motion to consider approving employment of Todd Johnson as director, supervisor, or coach of a pupil activity program, head varsity boys basketball coach for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation in accordance to the board approved schedule, pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Roll call.
Roncone?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Oh, it's, it's Clark?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Motion passes, item number twenty-four.
Make a motion to consider approving employment of Janet Goring on a regular full-time contract as bookkeeper slash central office secretary, non-bargaining member, effective January first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as recommended by the superintendent.
Second the motion.
Discussion. Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number twenty-five.
Like to consider motion approving employment of Christie Cyrus on a regular full-time contract as bookkeeper, central office secretary, non-bargaining unit member, effective June one, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yup.
Motion passes, item number twenty-six.
I move to consider approving employment of Amanda Moore as district concert accompanist for the fifteen, sixteen school year, retroactively the first day work, and for the sixteen, seventeen school year, as recommended by the superintendent, compensation in accordance with board approved schedules.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number twenty-seven.
Like to make a motion to consider approving employment of Brenna Flatley as engineering and science technology teacher for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year, as recommended by the superintendent, compensation in accordance with board approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials.
Second the motion.
Discussion. Roll call.
Roncone?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number twenty-eight.
Make a motion to consider approving employment of Melissa Stimm, Stimson, intervention specialist for the two thousand sixteen through seventeen school year, as recommended by, recommended by the superintendent, compensation in accordance, the board approved schedules pending verification of all credentials.
Second the motion.
Discussion. Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number twenty-nine.
Like to consider motion approving parole leave for Kimberly Grossman, intervention specialist for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncone?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number thirty.